Good evening, everybody. This is the regular Board meeting of the San Benito C I S D Board of Trustees. It is Tuesday, May 15, 2018, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 6:30 PM. Ms. Sonia Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Janie Silva.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Emma Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Victor Rosas.
Present.
Mr. Angel Mendez.
Present.
Dr. Nate Carmen.
Present.
And Mr. Tony Torres.
Present.
We move on. We move on to Agenda Item 3 and 4, the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and Texas Flags, and our invocation. I will turn it over to Ms. Garcia.
That's me. We have Leonel Suniga leading the Pledge of Allegiance. He is the son of Leonel and Armentina Suniga. He is a 15-year-old ninth grader at Veterans Memorial Academy. His favorite school subjects are biology and world geography. Leonel is currently the president of the ninth-grade class student council. He is a member of the Business Professionals of America organization and VMA's recycling club. This semester, Leonel is taking a dual enrollment course through Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. When he graduates from high school, Leonel would like to attend Texas A&amp;M and obtain a degree in architecture. Next, we have the invocation. Kaitlyn Partida. Kaitlyn is the daughter of Randy and Isa Partida. She is a 14-year-old ninth grader at Veterans Memorial Academy. Her favorite school subject is English 1. In her spare time, she enjoys tumbling and helping her community. Kaitlyn is currently the captain of the VMA cheerleading squad. She is also part of the San Benito High School varsity cheerleading squad. Kaitlyn is a member of the FFA organization. When she graduates from high school, Kaitlyn would like to attend the University of Texas in San Antonio or Texas Christian University and pursue a degree in dentistry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Carmen, and everyone here at this meeting. Please bow your heads. Loving heavenly Father, you are gracious God, and we pause before the start of this school board meeting to lift up our hearts to you in prayer and thanksgiving for all your many mercies to us throughout the past months and to see your face as we prepare to make plans for the future of our schools. We pray that you would give each one of us present today the wisdom to discuss the many important issues fully and to make our decisions wisely. We thank you that you have guarded and guided the development of our schools for so long. We lift each member to the staff to you and each child, as well as every member of the board, and ask your continued blessings over each and every life that we seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength in all issues and areas that touch our lives. Keep us ever humble before your throne and give us the integrity to stand up for what we believe in. We ask for your wisdom for all students that are taking star exams this week. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
If the parents are in the audience, will you please be, stand up and be recognized? Thank you. And the principal is Mr. Gilbert Galván. Thank you.
We now move on to our special recognition. So I will turn it over to Ms. Elena Longoria.
Yes, sir. I would like to introduce the San Benito High School principal, Mr. Henry Sanchez, who is in the audience, and he will be doing the honors for us this evening. And he's very proud to be here introducing his top 10 graduates for the class of 2018 and also the high five students that are going to be graduating this year for earning the top 5% of their class each semester since their freshman year. So take it away, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Ms. Longoria. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Central Offices, Administration, thank you for having me here tonight. I am honored and privileged to be representing our top students for the class of 2018. Some of them cannot be here tonight. We have different activities still going on at the school, and as you know, at the end of the year, it really gets a little exciting and heavy. But we're going to go with the students that are here, and I'm going to start off first with the top 10 students of the class of 2018. Ranked number 10th is Leanne M. Ramirez. Ranked 9th is Robert J. Resendes. Ranked 8th is Nady Garza Jimenez. Ranked 7th, Jacob J. Sauceda. Ranked 6th, Michaela R. Garcia. Ranked 5th, Stephanie M. Cruz. Ranked 4th, Andrea D. Vela. Ranked 3rd is Eduardo Abrego II. And our salutatorian is Joseph P. Muñoz. I'm sorry. Our salutatorian is Joseph P. Muñoz, and our valedictorian is Lindsay Maya Gore. Our high five recipients for the class of 2018 are as follows. Eduardo Abrego II. Stephanie Marie Cruz. Penny Diana Escovedo Luna. Michaela Rihanna Garcia. Nady Aziri Garza Jimenez. Lindsay Maya Gore. Joseph Philip Muñoz. Robert Juan Resendes. Samantha Rodriguez. Jacob Jaime Sauceda. Miguel Serrato. Thank you all, and that's it for us. Parents, please stand up and be recognized.
Congratulations to these students, and parents, thank you all for being here and supporting your children. So we'd like to do an award also this evening and let you know about an award that one of our board members, our very own Orlando Lopez, received on behalf of the Texas State Teachers Association. We do have some representatives that are in the audience, and they're welcome to come up to the front. And I'm going to let you all know a little bit about the award that Mr. Orlando Lopez received. This is according to San Benito TSTA President Araceli Correa. She indicated that Mr. Lopez was selected as the recipient of the award due to his passion, vision, and unyielding perseverance to ensure that our children receive opportunities for a quality education with quality educators. Lopez, who was elected to the Board last May, accepted his award alongside fellow honorees, Harlingen C I S D Board of Trustees George McShan, Texas District 40 House Representative Terry Canales, Texas District 34 United States Congressman Philimon Vela Jr., Mercedes I S D educator Adriana Gonzalez, Far San Juan Alamo I S D Board of Trustees Victor Perez, and Donna I S D Board of Trustees Alicia P. Reyna. So I'll turn it over to TSTA and see if they'd like to say a few words here, and congratulations to Mr. Lopez on his exceptional award. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and members in the audience. My name's Yolanda Gonzalez. I'm staff with the Texas State Teachers Association, and joining me this evening are the San Benito local officers, Ms. Araceli Correa, Ms. Irene Fiscal, Ms. Melissa Fiscal, Ms. Mary Maney, and Mr. Paul Hernandez. On April 25, 2018, the Texas State Teachers Association hosted a Friends of Education Gala in which several very important pro-public education advocates from the Rio Grande Valley were recognized for their outstanding work for public education. The TSTA Friends of Education honorees are individuals who have been highly engaged in advancing and promoting the interests of public schools and the students of this great state. These honorees were recognized for their demonstrated work in prioritizing on the success of public schools in their respective areas. It was a great honor for the San Benito local to recognize and highlight the great work Mr. Orlando Lopez has engaged in as a community member and as a school board member in the past few years. We believe that it is individuals such as Mr. Lopez who are visionaries and work daily to truly effect positive change and growth for this school district to continue on a positive path of change, people who truly care about the communities they serve. But in his own words, Mr. Lopez recognizes that it is teamwork and commitment from those of you on this school board who has made it possible for these things to begin in a positive transformation. He gives full credit to a great working team that has dedicated countless hours in this grand undertaking, and he made sure he mentioned that that evening on April 25th. So everything is possible with a team, is what he says. We are truly proud of the work Mr. Lopez has engaged in. So far, we know your dream is grand because you shared your dream that night, and the road is greener with individuals like you leading the change. We acknowledge your dedication and hard work, and we thank you once more, and we present you with this award this evening. And thank you very much, and we appreciate you very much, and we appreciate you very much as well. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, I don't know if you wanted a few words before we start shedding tears here?
Well, first and foremost, I wanted to say that I'm extremely honored and humbled by the recognition of TSTA, and thank you all very much. And secondly, it's a true testament, like I've said before countless times, it's a true testament that, you know, that this San Benito school board has placed our students and our staff at the main focus of our progression towards a positive manner, and it greatly, you know, it's greatly, once again, very humbling, and I greatly appreciate the support. And, but once again, I couldn't have done it with such a great team. And all these board members here, I know we're going to do great things moving forward, but I greatly appreciate that you guys acknowledge what we've been trying to do, you know, and in a short period of time. But we also have to thank our great staff that we have here in San Benito I S D, starting with our administration. So that, you know, of course, goes unsaid, and like I said before, I said our teachers are the catalyst to make sure our kids succeed. So once again, we're all Friends of Education, and thank you all so very much.
All right. We now move on to the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Carmen.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. This evening, pinch hitting for Mrs. Hillary Rendon, we have Mrs. Vicki Perez.
Hi, Ms. Perez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Dr. Carmen, tonight, on behalf of Mrs. Rendon, I'm going to go over the finance reports. Please stop me if you have any questions. Starting off with the cash account report. For the month ending in April, for the total of our bank accounts that are at Frost Bank, First Public, and Texas Class Investments, we have a total of $46,834,261.51. For our student activity accounts, for the accounts listed in the month ending of April, we have a total of $502,669.34 for an increase of approximately $37,000. And the list of accounts are attached as well. For the comparison of revenue to budget, on the revenue for the local side, we have received $78,764,615.09 for a total of 67% of the $117,248,648 that we have estimated as revenues. On special revenues, we have received $8,261,037.62, which is 44% of the $18,480,680. Including the encumbrances, because those are earmarked already, it is a total of 54%. The 44%, the 44% is just what we have paid out. Those will be paid. And on our debt service, we have received $6,977,868.84 for a total of 89.32% of the $7.8 million that we have estimated. Our total revenues as of April is $94,3,521.55 for a total of 65.5%. Moving on to the expenditures, on the local side, we have $67,5,375.54 for a total of On the special revenues, we have $7,856,752.72 for a total of 42%. And on interest and sinking, we have $6,468,478.13 for an estimated 82.8% spent. Moving on to tax collections, we have received a total of $11,516,499.65, which is 88.67% of the $12,987,009.28 that we have estimated as levy. And on the back of the tax collections report, last month, we were asked to look at how much we are getting as far as, how much we're giving as far as tax breaks and freezes. So the information that's given in front of you, the total of $6,425,000, I just want to make sure that it's understood that that's not all of the amount that we would have gotten if we didn't do that. Only $222,000 is what the Board is in charge of giving the discounts. The rest of it, the county, they do their own thing. Do you all have any questions about that?
Does that vary from year to year, given other...
It does, depending on what our levy is and what the tax collection rates are for that month, and I can get that information for you if you'd like.
Is there much variance, though? Because otherwise, yeah, it...
No. The highest percentage of collection is always going to be in October.
Okay.
They want to capitalize on that 3%. And lastly, are the check disbursements for April? For a total of $12,480,305.24, I'm sorry, $34. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? I think we're good.
All righty.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki Perez.
Yes, thank you.
All right. We move on to consent agenda. In order to promote efficient meetings, the Board may act upon more than one item by a single vote through the use of consent agenda. Consent items placed on the agenda shall be marked with an asterisk. Consent items are items for which no board discussion is anticipated for which the superintendent recommends approval. Prior to the time which approval of consent agenda is had at the request of any member of the Board of Trustees, any item on the consent agenda shall be removed and given individual consideration. Under business and finance, 1, request for approval of budget amendments for 2017, 2018. Any questions? Consent? Number 2, request for approval of Dr. Garza's STEAM Academy renovations. Any questions?
Yes, I have to abstain from that one.
Mr. Torres, do we have to pull that from consideration and have her...
No, I'll note this for reference.
Thank you. Consent? Number 3, request for approval of San Benito High School renovations, A, Arispe Flooring, and B, Noble Texas Builders. Question?
Again, I have to abstain from B, Noble Texas Builders.
Noted. Consent? Number 4, request for approval of the purchase of network hardware and services for the relocation of the district's Network Operations Center, NOC. Question? Consent? Number 5, request for approval to award RFP-0418-CBS charter bus services district-wide to provide services as needed. Question? Consent? Number 6, request for approval of frontline education agreement. Question? Consent? Number 7, request for approval of 2018-2019 compensation plan. Question? Question by Mr. Rosas and Mr. Mendez. Number 8, request for approval of the purchase of 5 Eloma Come By ovens for Riverside Middle School, Berzaquavasa Middle School, Fred Booth Elementary, Dr. Cash Elementary, and San Benito Veterans Memorial Academy. Question? Consent? Number 9, request for approval of a new San Benito High School course, Braille Reading and Writing, for 2018-2019. Question? Consent? Number 10, request for approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito C I S D and Southwest Key Programs Incorporated, Southwest Key Casa Rio Grande, and Southwest Key Casa Antigua for 2018-2019. Question? Consent? Number 11, request for approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito C I S D and Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department for 2018-2019. Question? Consent? Number 12, request for approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito C I S D and Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, or JJAEP, for 2018-2019. Question? Consent? Number 13, request for approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito C I S D and Tropical Texas Behavioral Health for 2018-2019. Question? Consent? Number 14, request for approval of revisions to D C B Local. Question? Consent? Number 15, request for approval of revisions to E I C Local. Question? Consent? Request for approval of Board minutes. Question? Consent? Can I please have a motion to approve action agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mendez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We move on to question item number 7, request for approval of the 2018-2019 compensation plan. We have Mr. Rosas and then Mr. Mendez.
I believe, Dr. Carmen, you had some corrections on it?
Yes, sir. We just wanted to point out some changes from the committee meeting to tonight. They're very minor. And, Dr. Phillips, make sure I don't skip over it. Based on the TASB analysis, as well as a local analysis from area school districts, we were paying about 86% of market value for athletic trainers. So you'll see a change in pay grades, moving them up 1 from pay grade 2 to pay grade 3, Dr. Phillips, and then a stipend in the amount of $2,000, head trainer stipend the amount of $4,000. Did I get all that right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Those are the changes we just wanted the Board to be aware. It had changed since the committee meeting based on our research and the data from TASB.
No, no.
Yeah, so where the stipends were already in place, right? We're just doing, moving them, moving the pay grades?
Those stipends were not in place.
We're not. Okay. I'm fine with that.
No, okay, I'm fine with it. But I also wanted to add, in reference to the 2%, I talked to Mr. Phillips and fellow board members in reference to it. I wanted to include everybody, from the top to the bottom, even though if they maxed out on their steps, 2% across the board, with your approval, it should be, I think, approved for the fact is, if we don't give the ones on the top loyal individuals, they're going to gain, they're going to lose out in the insurance changes.
Yes.
And not only that, they're loyal employees also. This is only, it doesn't affect the steps, it affects them getting a pay increase, okay? So that's whatever you all think about.
I would like to agree with Mr. Rosas on that. I agree with him strongly. I'm a teacher advocate, and I believe she deserves.
I know, because we... Thank you, Ms. Silva.
Mendez.
I think the, what we wanted to know is a clarification, was it an increase on standard of living? And if so, the adjustment should be across the board and not at the cutoff point. So that was a conversation that Mr. Rosas and I had had, and indeed, if it is an increase of standard of living, then that shouldn't matter whether there's a cap or not. It should go automatically at the, at the end of the, of the maximum amount. So everybody should receive that 2% increase across the board. That's what, that's the interpretation that we were getting.
Right, and it is a 2% of actual salaries. We had presented it as up to the maximum. However, certainly, the Board can take action and give 2% across the board, and we will not adjust the pay scales because we still have employees who, however it happened over the last several years, are over $10,000 above the maximum for their current job. So we're not going to adjust the pay grade to reflect that, but what I'm hearing from the Board is, the recommendation is to give a 2% of actual salary across the board regardless of maximum. Is that a correct interpretation?
Yeah, and that was my, my only concern was, and you addressed it already, was making sure that the pay scales, which we, or pay grades, that we worked so hard last year to fix after like 25 years, to make sure that they weren't skewed, right? And we would end up in the same position. So if we're just doing the 2% across the board without skewing the pay grades, then I think we're fine with that. But the question becomes, though, those at the top, and I will say this, those who have been maxed out have been earning over the market value for the last 10 years while some have not. So at what point are we going to say, you know, it hasn't been fair for those who haven't been earning the maximum versus those who have? So as a Board, in terms of fiscal responsibility, you know, we're going to do this now, but where does the buck stop? And are we going to do that every year for everyone? And are we going to do that every year for everybody who maxes out? And also for me, how many people are maxed out, and how much does that look like in terms of our budget? So, those are my only concerns. Otherwise, I'm fine with doing it.
Can we get an analysis on that to see exactly where we stand? And that way, we can make the decision in June? Or do we have to make the decision today?
No, sir, you don't have to make a decision today. I think we tallied up fifty-three employees who would, who would not get a full two percent. Some would receive part of that two percent, others, like I said, are so far over, they would, they would get zero. Total value it would cost us, it's negotiable in our size of a budget, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a huge number. I can ballpark it for you. We're talking probably less than fifty thousand dollars in the total budget, so the total number is not a huge number compared to our one-hundred-and-seventeen million dollar budget. But the issue was just based on the TASB review of our salaries and the fact that we have several employees who are just, however they get put there, are just so far beyond the maximum number. But as far as it impacting our budget, it's not going to be a huge hit for us.
Any questions?
Well, in my opinion, you know, after assessing the situation, and, you know, we've been talking about this for a while, and, you know, evaluating the compensation plan, and we all know that it's not perfect, and it can't be perfect because of the way the whole situation was brought up to us, you know, a year ago or so, so, you know, I have to agree with Mr. Rosas. You know, unfortunately, you know, people were overpaid, or, you know, were paid or compensated for whatever they did at one point or another. You know, I still feel that at this moment in time, you know, a two percent raise across the board would be feasible, and it's only right, you know, so, you know, that's, that's my opinion, my two cents on it. Appreciate it.
Motion, Mr. Rosas?
Motion's two percent.
Okay. Mr. Rosas, oh, you have one more comment? All right, and Mr. Mendez?
But it's not in reference to the compensation, it's moving down lower on the academic stipend proposed, because that's the item that we're discussing. So, if we go down to the, the not, not in teachers' pay scale, and we're talking about counselors at the high school, counselors at the middle school, I don't see, or maybe y'all could point me to the direction where the elementary counselors are receiving a stipend, or are we not considering them as a, as a potential stipend recipient for this next school year? It's on page thirty, eighteen, eighteen, I'm sorry, eleven out of eighteen.
Now, if memory serves, when we did the analysis, the pay grade that TASB worked on us with for counselors did not reflect any type of an additional salary for secondary, and when we compared that to the data from TASB, it showed that high school counselors were under the market value and middle school counselors were as well, which is why mid-year last year, we proposed the one-thousand-five-hundred for middle school and three-thousand for high school. The market analysis did not show that we were under market value for elementary counselors, so we did not propose that last year, and we have not added that on this year. Certainly, if you want to disregard some of the market value and add a stipend on, that motion can be made.
Well, and I think that's where I wanted to go, because we are providing stipends to a numerous, well, a plethora of different specialties, and I'd hate to exclude one counselor from another if, you know, because, you know, everybody's valued the same, and that's the way I see it, and they should be valued the same. So, my recommendation is definitely provide something and then conduct an analysis to see, okay, where are we with all of these different counselors, teachers, and so forth? Because, I mean, that's the only thing that really stuck out. The middle, the elementary, I mean, they do as much work as everybody else, but yet we don't see anything reflecting that on our stipend.
And that was just based on the market value?
Yes.
So, as far as our teaching pay scale, we are in good shape as far as market value. For our counselors, with the stipends that we added on, based on market value, high school counselors do earn more than middle school, middle school counselors across the state earn a little bit more than elementary, and so our stipend schedule reflects that. That's just based on the data from TASB.
So, okay, Doc, so let's get, okay, so let's get clarification here. So, so right now, the way the pay scale is between elementary, middle school, and high school, as far as the counselors are concerned, are they within the range? So, let's say we increase, for example, okay, let's say we increase the stipend, for example, in elementary, then we're going to have to increase the stipend also in middle school and high school, correct or no?
No, sir. If we put a stipend in for elementary counselors, it simply means that we'll be paying above market value a little bit for, depending on what y'all want to approve, above market value. But with the fifteen hundred for middle school and the three thousand for high school, we're right at market value for those positions.
Dr. Carmen, and I'm sorry, but on the market value, what was the analysis based on, on the value statewide? How does, how did that come about?
TASB gave us several values. So, they gave us values throughout Region One, then they compared us to similarly sized districts statewide, and then based on both of those values, they drew out a market average.
So, are we comfortable giving a number tonight?
I'm comfortable, well, I looked the ascending model, you know, you've got fifteen hundred, three thousand. My recommendation, is it fifteen hundred for middle schools? If we are providing a stipend, at least anywhere between five hundred and a thousand dollars, that would be fair, you know, if we're going to be looking at that. Now, at the same token...
Excuse me, was there a motion for the two, two and a half percent?
We'll probably do the motion together.
Together? Because you're, it's totally different. It's not, it's totally different, so...
Since it's the same, since it's the same discussion item, we're going to combine both motions, so I'll ask for a motion for the two percent as well as what Mr. Mendez...
I just want to clarify that.
It would need to be incorporated into one. You can have the two motions.
How many?
If the movement wants to proceed that way, there wasn't a second, so it's still...
We're still discussing. Ms. Perez, I know Ms. Rendon is not here, would you be privy to, or maybe Dr. Phillips, in terms of what is constant? If we're going to be fiscally responsible, again, if we have three thousand at the high school, fifteen hundred at the middle school, what would be five hundred?
It would cost us five thousand, five hundred dollars. We have eleven campuses.
So, can I please have a motion to approve a two percent increase across everybody across the district, including those who have maxed out, along with a five hundred dollar stipend for elementary counselors?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item nine, closed meeting, discussion under the authority of the Texas Government Code 551.071 for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney.
Before we convene, I want to recognize one of the top candidates just came in, Joseph P. Munoz, he's the number two student.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Mr. Munoz, you can come up. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
In because he was with the band.
Was he your student?
But he goes...
He is also a high five student.
Yes.
Congratulations. And salutatorian for the class of 2018.
Yes, the parents, Marty, and the grandparents, grandparents. Stand up. Grandparents, stand up too. You're just as important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Congratulations again, Mr. Munoz. We'll see you on graduation night. So, before I was interrupted, it was a good interruption. Closed meeting, discussion under the authority of the Texas Government Code 551.071 for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any subjects or matters authorized by law. 551.074 for the purpose of the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.072 for the purpose of deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of property. One, employment resignations and retirements. Two, discussion and consideration of the internal auditor's contract. Number three, attorney consultation regarding purchase and value of property. We convene into executive session at exactly 7:10 PM.
Okay, we're back. We reconvene this, the board meeting to, at exactly 8:30. Regarding the employment and resignation and retirement, Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mendez, I would ask that the board take action on the employment as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lopez, and second by Ms. ML Garcia. Do I have a, could I have a vote for the approval of the not recommendation? With the favor of, with the favor of aye? Aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Second item, discussion and consideration of internal auditor contract.
I move that we provide the internal audit at thirty-day non-renewal, non-renewal notice.
Motion is on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lopez. All in favor? Aye. All again, same sign? Motion carries. Item number three, regarding the attorney consultation regarding purchase and value of property.
Yes, Mr. Mendez, I motion to authorize administration to proceed as discussed in executive session, please.
Motion is on the floor by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Silva. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Talk to him.
Public comment?
Oh, public comment. Oh, my, give me one second. Okay, next item, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments? No public comment. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rosa, second by Ms. ML Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.